Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Public hearings to get us started, the first one, public hearing for adopting a local law named the plumbing code to be placed in the city of Cortland charter at, in the city of Cortland code, new article 214. And this public hearing is officially open. There is anybody present that would like to speak to this, I will ask you to raise your hand virtually or uh in real, in real life, give me a wave of your hand. This is about an alteration to the plumbing code. Public hearing is officially open. I bet you.
Let me ask first.
Well, the first public hearing is officially open. There is anybody present, please give me an indication, you can wave your hand. Here we go. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. With regard to the plumbing code, we will call the public hearing officially closed. Our second public hearing, amending section 300 dash 113 signs prohibited and exempted. Public hearing is officially open. Is there anybody present to speak to this? Looking and not seeing, please raise your hand either virtually or in real life, give me a wave, which obviously means that you need to have your camera on. Another call, anybody would like to speak on our second public hearing, information is in the packet. Signs permitted and prohibited. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll call the second public hearing closed. And our third public hearing, public hearing on the sale of property located at 79 River Street. And this is owned by the city up for sale, the public hearing is officially open. And what the city is looking to do, there is a section of property um that has been reviewed by the planning commission, there's a request from the public, a member of the public to purchase. So we are putting up the public hearing in uh consistency with the policies and procedures for the city of Cortland. And this is up for review. Potential sale of property at 79 Rivers, is there anybody present that would like to speak regarding this? Hearing none, seeing none. Can you give another minute? And last call. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll call the public hearing officially closed. And at this point, we can call the meeting officially to order. Ask everybody to rise if you're able or pledge allegiance. And I'm going to try to make sure everybody muted. You will be able to unmute yourselves afterwards, usually goes a little smoother if we are all muted. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you everyone. Public comments, we've got the opportunity for the general public, if you would like to make a comment to myself and council, we ask the comments are limited to three minutes in length, that they are directed to the council as a whole, and that they deal with issues that are relevant to the city of Cortland, that the common council would have the opportunity to impact. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council? And you can again, raise your hand, speak either, raise your hand either virtually or in real life. Very good. No one for public comments. I have a proclamation and a couple of housekeeping, let me start with our housekeeping with council.
Mayor, I did see somebody with their hand up.
Oh. Who did I miss?
Alexandria.
Is that Alexandra Mikowski? Oh, I'm sorry. Alex, floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity. Um, sorry, I'll lower my hand. Um, so I'm, I'm just here to speak on the request for use of the pocket part. Um, and so I can be called on later, I just wanted to let you know that I'm here for that purpose today.
Very good. Thank you for being here, Alex. Yeah, moving on, I'm going to ask council for a little shuffling of the deck, so to speak. Let's start off in terms of agenda. Uh, we have two items that are towards the end of the agenda that I would like to move up sooner. Discussion on the Dairy Day Parade and discussion on community cleanup. And Dairy Day Parade, we've got the opportunity to potentially pass a couple of resolutions with it. I am going to ask that we make Dairy Day Parade agenda item number five and community cleanup agenda item number six. Uh, does that meet with council approval? Very good. And agenda item, probably should do this one first, agenda item number two will be removed from the agenda, request has been removed. And I'm thinking at the end, but Troy, if you would like it someplace else Hubbard Street and overnight, or yes, parking on the street, overnight parking on Hubbard Street. We put that at the end of the agenda? All right. And then I'm not sure if we had a draft of the resident of the council agenda, there's a draft that I think came out, and I'm not sure if everybody has the updated, but after number 18 on your agenda, number 19 will be the resolution to approve the recommendation of Jeff Smith to the Board of Assessment Review. Um, just moving that around to make sure that we're all on the same page when we get to that point. Mr. Van Donson.
Unfortunately, I, I need to request an executive session, discuss a labor contract as well as uh to be expected litigation.
And we are talking at the end?
Yes, and I think there may be action as a result of this executive session.
Discussing contract labor negotiation. Potential action at the end. Council, does this meet with approval?
Yes.
Does anybody object? Very good. I have a proclamation to read. And I think this is very relevant, not just for today, for this week, but for a number of reasons. So let me grab a sip of water first. And this proclamation is in support of the YWCA's Stand Against Racism Week, which takes place, started yesterday and is all through this week. So whereas black indigenous um and other people of color face economic injustice, social deprivation and health inequities because of racist policies, regulations and laws that have been created um and change opportunity for some and barriers for others. And whereas structural racism refers to the totality of ways in which societies foster racial discrimination through mutually reinforcing systems of housing, education, employment, earnings, benefits, credit, transportation, media, healthcare and criminal justice that in turn reinforce discriminatory beliefs, values and distribution of resources. And where the American Public Health Association finds racism to be a barrier to health equity and has named racism as a driving force of social determinants of health. The social determinants of health defined as the social, environmental and economic factors that influence health, and these include employment, housing, education, access to healthcare, nutritious food and public safety, and this is known to impact lifelong health outcomes, beginning even before birth. And whereas racism operates on systemic institutional and interpersonal levels, all of which operate throughout time and across generations. So racist practices have resulted in inequitable depressed communities, and they continue to negatively impact educational achievement for people of color, access to nutritional food for people of color, economic security, rates of environmentally based health problems for people of color, rates of infant maternal mortality for black and American Indian, Alaska Native mothers and children due to living in geographical areas with less access to healthcare and resulting in mortality rates higher than that for those of white infants. So now, therefore be it resolved that the city of Cortland, common council and the mayor publicly asserts that racism is a crisis and it affects all members of our city and in state of New York. And be it further resolved that we encourage other city, local, state and national entities to recognize this crisis and commit to advocate racial justice as a core element of policies, programs and procedures. And the city of Cortland will continue and with urgency to review our policies and procedures for the purpose of eradicating implicit and explicit racial bias and develop instead policies and procedures that build race equity. And we will support community efforts to amplify issues of racism. And we should actively and authentically engage communities of color in the initiation, drafting and implementation of policy solutions, the local issues regarding to health equity through community-based participatory research, inclusive and representative community engagement, participatory budgeting and/or public deliberation. We will also make government protocols and decisions available to the community and ensure that policies include clear roles, responsibilities and evaluation processes to hold government responsible for successful implementation. And we will prevent biased policy decision making and implementation through protocols that require equity analysis through staff training on equity bias and cultural sensitivity. And we will ensure equal and unbiased law enforcement and criminal justice through policies on policing practices and through training and legal system protocols. And we will work to solidify alliances and partnerships with other organizations that are confronting racism and encourage other local, state, regional and national entities to recognize racism as a public health crisis. Um, what I'd like to do, this was an exercise that has been done, and there are 10 questions. And I'm going to ask that everybody, if you're able to, if you've got a pen and paper, start with the number 10. And if the answer to any of these questions is yes, then you're going to take a number off of that number 10. So at the end, you will end up with a number between zero and 10. So there's 10 questions here, and at the end, we're going to write, if you're comfortable, write the number on the piece of paper and hold it up. And share what your number is. First one, have you ever been called a racial slur? So if you have, your number goes down from 10 to nine. Second question, have you ever been in a, in a department store or another place of business and you were followed by security for no apparent reason? Have you ever been walking on the street and you could see somebody cross the street simply to avoid you? Have you ever been at a place of business and you've been mistaken for being the janitor or the custodian? Have you ever had a discussion where somebody assumed that affirmative action was what got you your employment? Have you ever been in a situation where you feared for your life with a routine traffic stop? Have you ever been detained or stopped by an enforcement authority for no apparent reason? Have you ever been denied service due to skin color or ethnicity? Have you ever had to drive more than 15 miles, 15 miles or more from where you reside to find appropriate hair care products? And last question, have you ever been a group of, in a group of people and someone made an inappropriate comment or joke about race or ethnicity and it was demeaning to you? So if everybody, if you're willing, what is the number? So anytime there was a number that you heard and it came down, how many were you left with? That comes through.
Now, you want to reread number 10, I didn't catch the last part of it.
Have you ever been? Have you ever been in a group of people and somebody made an inappropriate joke or comments about race or ethnicity that was demeaning to you?
It was aimed at me?
Uh, demeaning to you.
Oh, demeaning to me.
And as we look around, we see that there are different numbers put forward by different people. And as I think about this, for me, it's interesting because um the things that sometimes I know in my life, I've not had to think about the challenges I've not encountered. Now, when I hold up a piece of paper that says 10, and when I look around and I see people on this call who have a much lower number. Maybe it's race, maybe it's ethnicity, gender, sometimes these things happen, but a lack of equity is something that we need to stand against, and we stand against it together. And I'm glad that we have Carol Vandecar here tonight, she is um on the board for the YWCA. Uh, Carol, would you like to say a couple of words?
Well, I'm very proud to be here and to be part of a group of people that are taking these issues seriously and understand that there's, these are issues for all of us, not just for certain people, but um taking a stand against racism, taking a stand for equity, for inclusion makes all of us stronger, makes it a better community for all of us. And I'm so proud and grateful um to the entire council for that proclamation and thanks to Mayor Tobin for leading us through the exercise and um leading us to being a healthier, stronger community as a whole by fighting against racism. Thank you.
Very good, Carol, and thank you for being here. Moving on from the proclamation, mayor's report. Uh, some of you may have noticed that there is some construction happening in different parts of our city. And we have Nick Dovi, who's the deputy superintendent of public works. Nick, can you give us a update? Where do we stand and what are, what's happening that people should expect in terms of what we currently see and what they should expect to see?
Sure, Brian. Um, obviously you're referring to uh phase three of the Gateway Project on Clinton Ave. Um, work commenced there a few weeks ago. Uh, the DPW staff and the engineering firms involved with the project um have been trying to put together a readable schedule uh to put on the city website. We also have some uh some information that will be basically updated every two weeks uh that I can present either to council and/or uh put on the city website as well. Uh, they started uh the construction down at the intersection of uh basically Pomeroy, Clinton and River Street. They're working west of Clinton Ave. Um, that started a couple of weeks ago. Uh, during this time, residents will see uh consistently maintained off-site detouring, directing traffic down Pomeroy uh to Port, to Port Watson Street and Church Street. Uh, those are the state routes, that's what the, the maintenance protection of traffic, the DOT approved for us. Um, I know there's been some questions um on, on why we didn't use some of the, the other streets in the area like River Street. Uh, DOT really felt like uh River Street not having a signalized intersection with Port Watson uh was not uh the best option. I totally understand that there's going to be some increased traffic. Um, and it's an inconvenience, please bear with us. Hopefully uh residents and, and community members get used to the detour um and stop attempting to take Clinton Ave unless you're, um, you know, you live down there. No through traffic should be trying to take Clinton Ave um in either direction from uh the Main Street area or the River Street um end. What, what we, what we're trying to maintain here is full access to properties and businesses. Uh, there's only a few down on that end, but the oil change place in Starbucks, um, there's a lot of signs basically coming in any direction um to get, get patrons to those, to those establishments uh without too much of a problem. Uh, you know, there'll be periods when access may be temporarily blocked due to open trenching. Um, you know, directly in front of somebody's driveway or the insulation of sidewalks and curbs. The contractor that we have on site is G Devy and Sentis and Sons, they're going to maintain active communications uh with residents when these time periods arise, notifying them door to door with written notices. Uh, you know, please plan accordingly during these short, short but necessary intervals. The remainder of the work uh from the railroad tracks to Main Street will probably be most likely completed next year. Um, the final driving service, surface pavement and striping, landscaping, plantings, furnishings are probably slated for around October, so fall 2022. Um, during, right now, what we have going on down there in the area is sanitary and storm replacement. Uh, it'll continue from Pomeroy Street, working towards Hubbard. Um, the, the basic premise of what they're trying to accomplish down there is instead of doing one single utility, uh, you know, from one end of the project all the way to the other, they're, they're breaking it into thirds or quarters and trying to take two or three blocks and basically do all the utility work, curbing sidewalks, probably base asphalt, then move to a next section up the street heading west uh in an effort to uh not tie up the entire street for the entire project. I will tell you that the street is closed, it's traffic and it will remain like that. Um, just because their, their materials and staging areas uh are, are kind of variously spotted through the project mainly on the corner of Green Bush and Clinton. So for them to move materials back and forth, uh, you know, with, with the, the less traffic down there is the better. Um, but we're, we're trying to establish a step-by-step schedule that we can update, you know, periodically every couple of weeks. Uh, residents will be, will be notified if any of the utilities are compromised or have interruptions. Um, and we're really doing the best we can. It's a, it's a really large project, um, especially for a municipality our size, and, and I ask you guys to uh, you know, bear with us and be patient. It's going to be at least 18 months.
Very good, thank you, Nick. Does anybody have questions for Nick Dovi?
I do, Mayor.
Start with Bruce Titler.
Uh, Nick, I was wondering, I, I asked the mayor to put you on the, on the agenda here so we could go over these uh construction projects. So I'd like to
Sure.
continue, maybe next time you, at some point, you could give us an update on the streets that are being planned to be paved and, and some are going to be more than just paved and you have, I know you have some, some uh
Yeah.
heavy work, more uh heavier work on some streets than others, if you can just maybe sort of start to give us a timeline and streets and I, I promise I won't, and I don't think anybody else will hold you to the exact date, just to sort of give folks an idea, hey, your street's going to be milled and paved, you know, sometime uh, you know, in the next few weeks or, or whatever, so people can sort of anticipate those thoughts.
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate if you could do that for us.
Uh, I, I will tell you, I, I don't have the street list in front of me, I could try to rattle it off, uh, but we are starting milling, tentatively weather permitting, uh, I think it's the May 3rd, so like in a couple of weeks on Monday. Um, and like you said, there is, there's a lot of uh subsurface utility work involved, and there's some streets that are, that are just a, you know, mill and fill uh with, with some minor stuff for sanitary and storm sewer structures, uh, but I, I could, I could elaborate on that next meeting, no problem.
Great, and then maybe in the meantime, you could also maybe sort of put the, the streets in a tentative timeline on the website, so if anybody's interested, they could click on there and take a look at when.
Sure.
You know, I know we're all disrupted by these, but this is, these are good projects, and, and I want to say to the community of, I, I'm, it's, it's my belief that we can continue doing these and, and these kind of projects with the sewer sanitation and the, and the drain and the water and everything uh right on through and, and, you know, continue to rebuild our infrastructure and it's going to be, you know, frustrating for many of us, but it's going to be a good thing. Rejuvenating the, the infrastructure is a, is a, is a good thing for a community. So, you know, I hope people can just be patient and bear with us and the end results going to look fantastic and, you know, the quarter, infrastructure wasn't built in a year in Cortland, it's not going to be rebuilt in a year, but we need to keep on it. So
Yeah.
thank you for everything you're doing. And I know Max had a lot to do with this too in terms of bringing in the resources, so certainly want to give a shout out to Mac.
What we're trying to do, Bruce, is um be a little more proactive in, in relaying the information, whether it's, you know, um via the city website, common council meetings. It, it, the, the dates are tentative, obviously, you know, breakdowns of equipment, weather related stuff, but I think getting the information out there at least of what people should uh somewhat expect and when is, is a step in the right direction.
Yeah, well, thank you, Nick, and thank you, Mayor, appreciate this.
Very good, it was an excellent suggestion. Katie Silliman.
Nick, my question is, um, I have two. One is, um, are you going to be contacting homeowners as you dig up the streets to let them know that that would be a good time for them to fix their laterals if they want to?
Yeah, we usually have um a like general mailer that we put out before, before we pave the street. Uh, we, we do have a little time, we typically turn around and mill all the streets, then do all the subsurface work. So we do have like a just generic mailer of, hey, we're going to be in your area, we're going to be doing finished blacktop, and if you do think that you have some utility issues or you want to address them in the meantime, now's the time to do it.
Okay, and my other question or comment is, um, I think we need a bigger sign directing Starbucks traffic to, I think it's Cleveland, because on Cleveland it says no through traffic, but there's a tiny sign when you come off the freeway that says is Cleveland? And I've seen plenty of people just dashing down Clinton trying to nip in.
Okay, so, so on, on Clinton, I, I did see a small one, but it looked like uh that was out on Pomeroy, but that one was, I think
It is.
Starbucks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking of, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Dovi? Seeing none. Hey, Nick, thank you.
Yeah, no sweat.
And along the same vein, talking about infrastructure as Katie, very well put in there, uh sewer laterals, the city does have the opportunity for people that are low mod income uh to have their sewer laterals replaced by the city, and this would be at no cost to the property owner. This is via a grant that we applied for. We continue to work on infrastructure, the sewer lateral, for those of you who have not been in some of our previous meetings, that's the pipe that takes the old water out of the house to the main line, and that is the responsibility of the homeowner. However, we've got the opportunity to help homeowners out with this, you just have to qualify for the low mod income, and you can apply um that Toma Development, which is also the same place that's starting May 3rd, you can apply for the sidewalk. You can apply for the sidewalk replacement program. So if your sidewalk is having issues in the city of Cortland, if you have a block or several blocks of concrete that need to be replaced, maybe they heaved, they're broken. The city likes to do a match and typically it's about a one to one, your dollar, city dollar. And this helps keeps sidewalks passable. Another form of infrastructure that you're out for a walk is a very useful way for us to spend our money. If anybody has tripped over a sidewalk block that's been uneven, you know, the downside when you hit the pavement. So really encourage people, take a look at your sidewalks, get out there and if you need a little assistance, we've got a match program and that can be obtained at Toma Development. That's at 34 Tompkins. The sidewalk program and the sewer lateral program. Sidewalk program will also be advertised on the city website. So share with your neighbors in particular, if you know they've got some blocks that need to be fixed. Moving on to the minutes, approval of our minutes from April 6 of 2021. Like to ask, is there a motion to consider accepting and filing the minutes as is from somebody on council? Katie Solomon, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion, any issues or concerns with minutes? And council, make sure that you're unmuted for the vote. Hearing none and seeing no issues with the minutes, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please wave and say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, we file the minutes. Agenda item number one, resolution approval request on behalf of the Portland Elk's Lodge to use the pocket park for June 14 of 2021. They would like to collaborate with Family Counseling Services and Liberty Resources Liberty Resources for Narcan Training and Voter Registration Event. Motion to consider. We've got John Bennett, second Bruce Titler. And the floor is open. As a point of information, I will reveal I am an elk. I have no benefit to this, but I thought it would be good to make that public in case anybody wonders or asks. And Alex McCow, oh, Tom Michaels, you got a hand up.
Yes, Mayor. For the for the public, do we have the hours that this park will be open for?
For the event? Let's see. Alex McCowsky, I see you. Do you see me?
I do.
I wanted to say one to four, but am I mistaken?
We're hoping for an evening event. I believe Amanda Funk is also on and can speak on the elk side of it. I'm also an elk, just for
Very good. Amanda.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council and neighbors. Yes, we are looking to have an evening event. I did leave the time a bit ambiguous for this moment simply to allow council to determine the best impact for the event. The event is meant to help kind of combat the plague of overdose that our community is seeing during the this struggle of the pandemic and all that comes with it for individuals who are struggling with addiction. Beyond that, we were hoping as Elks and Americanism being near and dear to our heart to run a voter registration. And typically, a lot of voters in our area that live here work out of the area. So evenings is best and most convenient for them to register. And we would so be grateful for everyone's support on this.
Very good. So in terms of the evening, we're looking at June 14. Should we say 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM?
Works for me. If it works for Alex and it works for you.
Okay. Council, any further discussion? June 14, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM? Kat McCarthy.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask what the target audience, like the expected attendees might be.
Oh, that's a great question. So we've been holding pop-up events throughout the city and the county. And so we get a lot of family members, people that are concerned about someone else. We've gotten bartenders, EMS, grandma, people that struggle with active youth. So it's really any human that can get there. Just trying to make sure people have the tool that they need to help save a life similar to knowing the Heimlich maneuver. So you can take an action and get someone breathing again.
Yes, and I would piggyback on what Alex said. Do the fact that addiction does not have a demographic, we do not have one either.
Thanks. And how about about how many people typically attend an event over the course of a couple of hours?
Yeah, so the the smallest number we got was eight people out in Cincy for two hours. The largest number we've gotten was 50 people. It's less than 15 minutes, so we don't have to worry about contact tracing. It's outside. Everyone wears masks. We do the brief training. Everyone leaves with a kit and hopefully also registered to vote so they can be an active member of our community.
Thank you.
Part based upon my personal experience, the training, very quick, very easy. And at the end, got the handy dandy, got the actual equipment necessary. Thank you, Alexandra, holding up. Example, the bag, small, easy to fit. And no cost. And it took, what, five minutes? That was a cold day. You were outside and I appreciate you taking the time and being willing to do that, but it was quick and voter registration probably the same. So 10, 15 minutes, right?
Yep.
You could get people who are not registered to vote, or if you've had a change of address, could very quickly rectify that and potentially be trained in how to deliver Narcan. Council, any further questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then it carries. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Alexandra.
Thank you so much, Avia. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Number two, rebound right. I think this will be worth promoting. You've got an individual along with some other individuals who have gotten together and they are looking to give out some backpacks. Courthouse Park would probably not be the location. They're looking for another place, but they're doing some really nice things. And if you see it out on social media, if you've got questions, reach out to me and I can share. But they're talking about giving out backpacks with some essentials like soap, toothpaste, mask, sanitizer, some of the things that sometimes people end up a little shorting. It's just a very good community minded individual trying to do something. But that's coming off the agenda. So number three, resolution approved the special event application for the Portland Arts Connect Festival slated for Saturday, August 7, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Motion to consider. Bruce Titler, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. And Sheila Cohen is here. Sheila is the person who's been most in contact. And we can ask questions too. So this has been in the past in the Courthouse Park, but the recommendation or the request, rather, is to potentially move this to Main Street from Rotten Avenue down to Orchard, correct, Sheila? So looking for a potential street closure. Sound permit, I believe, as well. And there was a follow-up document after we've had a couple of conversations in terms of how it could be set up. All right, questions from council?
I don't have any questions, Mayor, but maybe Sheila can speak to it a little bit. I think it's a great idea. I know she's been in contact with some of the merchants downtown and then maybe she can give us some feedback on that just to alleviate, you know, possible concerns. I I think it's a wonderful event and I'm glad that we're able to support it.
So the merchants we did speak to were highly supportive and are looking forward to bringing people downtown and to stimulate business.
Are we going to be, will we be blocking off the street from Rotten Ave to Court Street?
To, I believe Brian's, I thought Court Street would be the better block of. But in talking with Brian, we thought to Central on the east side and to Orchard on the west side.
Oh, okay, okay.
If we could go to Court Street, that would even be more desirable. Would bring in more businesses.
Okay.
Although I was hoping that we could still spread out even if the street was blocked off.
Right.
To go further.
Okay. I'm I'm open to further discussion on that. So yes, I but I would, I support this 100%.
And we're hoping you'll work with us, Bruce.
I will.
Good.
Kat McCarthy.
About how many vendors are you targeting for this year?
We haven't discussed that, probably between 20 and 40.
Yeah. So that that added.
Store owners who will be taking orders for food either online or at a table in front of the businesses. So we're hoping to get them involved as well.
John Bennett.
To begin with, where the facilities, the porta facilities to go to the bathroom? Where are you planning on, how many? And where are you planning on having those? I don't really want to see those right on Main Street.
Brian and I had talked about putting them in the little pocket park next to the community. But we'll put them wherever it's least invasive. And not as not apparent. But there will be signage.
Yeah, on one hand, I'm very happy that maybe events can be going again. I'm not sure if that's a good enough big enough location, especially when you're saying between maybe 20 to 40 vendors. Because that's quite a few vendors within that small area. Plus, your COVID plan wasn't really detailed that well. Now hopefully, again, too, maybe things won't be so bad by then. That's four months away. But 20 to 40 vendors, straight musicians, jugglers, jugglers, other activity. And a lot more people. I'm looking at a bigger crowd there than we might really want. And I'm I'm not sure how how many, how many volunteers at this point do you have?
We start recruiting volunteers within the next two months. We'll be recruiting volunteers. But I would work with Nick to find a better spot. If we need a better spot, he would know better than me where the best spot was.
Singapore again, and I and I know people want to get things going, but just a few days ago on the news, they had that even the Taste of Syracuse is still waiting another year. Just because again, two things are, there's still too many unknowns. And if you're not sure of how many volunteers you might have, and you're not sure how many vendors you might have, to me, that means maybe you might need to come back and maybe, you know, wait another couple of weeks and maybe have things more in, you know, as far as the unknowns. And actually, between you and me to close down that section of Main Street from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, is quite a long time. Maybe 12 noon or 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM even.
In discussion with Brian, we talked about ending at four so that it wouldn't interfere with traffic coming downtown to dinner.
As see, so you're admitting, Sheila, and again, thank you for wanting to do this. But you're bringing up for us to give permission now, you're bringing up a lot of unknowns yet that you're not sure about and a lot of things that you just don't have the concrete answers to. I'd much rather have have this maybe tabled. And if you come back and at our next meeting in May or the second meeting in May with a little bit more concrete plans to it.
I think that's a good idea. Then you would know how many vendors you would have. You'd have more of them nailed down and then we would know whether we needed to give you more street. Do you think that that's possible, Sheila, that you could come back with more details nailed down? We would look at what is most feasible for Main Street and take our recommendations. Because we will not know exactly how many applicants we have to vend. So we would restrict it at whatever you think is most feasible and safe for that particular area.
Brian. Troy.
Closing it down from Rotten or you may also close it down from Rotten to Court because the only way to get to them other streets is down Main Street anyway. So you may also that's going to help the whole situation. You may also vote from Rotten to Court.
Well, the, so that was the original proposal. And without talking to business owners on Central, I thought that might pose an issue. You got a couple.
They're not going to get to Central anyway, so.
Well, if you go down Orchard, you can't speed across there.
Oh, then you're gonna, okay, close the street or the Orchard down, okay.
Correct.
Sheila, you you think it's going to upset the upper card too much if the Arts Council, we've waited a couple of weeks on this then, given some of the questions that have come up tonight?
Well, I think that we would take recommendations and work within the parameters that are reasonable. We don't have that much time for planning. So I would like a response this evening if possible.
So we could, we can approve this?
And I would work closely with the department heads to make sure that we're working within safe and feasible parameter, feasible parameters.
So Mayor, can we approve this with maybe, you know, with stipulations that some of the details may change moving forward?
I'm not comfortable with that.
Sorry, what did I try?
I said, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
So.
That's my personal belief.
That means that that you're looking to the city to set the guidelines as far as how many businesses can fit in that area. You want us to tell you how many businesses you can have in that area? I'd need to, I would like somebody from the Common Council to work with us so that we do this safely.
Well, Sheila, in saying all that, that's, it's kind of hard for us to give the okay tonight with so many unknowns. And again, too, generally in the past, whenever any of these events have gone on, all these details are done and brought to us. So that way, again, too, I'm not an event planner. So I can, I can't tell you how many vendors would be the ideal number there. So, yeah, I I want to think right now off the top of his head, somebody like Nick would want to give that opinion either. If we're not even sure if it's just going to be to Orchard or to Court Street. You've got musicians there. It's just at this point, I think it's best if this gets tabled and and you get some more details worked out and you come back to us in a few weeks.
Tom Michaels.
You know, give me this some thought. I'm okay with blocking out that date for them. I'm thinking that everything can be worked out in between. It sounds like we just need to tweak a few things. You know, the porta potty potties can go out behind the buildings and near one of the parking spaces out back. That's not, that's not a big issue. Closing off the streets isn't a big issue. We've done it before. We do it for the Dairy Parade. We do it the Brockway Truck Show. And I think it's just a matter of them just tweaking the agenda and who they're going to be as vendors. But I would leave the date open so that nobody else jumps in front of them for something else.
Well, I don't have a problem with that either, Tom. I just, again, too, there's there's more unknowns right now than positives. So, I mean, we can say
you know, at this point, you know, sure, if you want to say August 7. But again, too, I don't even like the 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I'd be much more.
Yeah, I would change it back to four. Four sounds reasonable. I've seen weddings planned a lot less involved in an art show.
I wouldn't start, I put eight to six to to consider setup. It wouldn't start, I put eight to six to, to consider setup and cleanup. It would start at likely ten or eleven.
Right. Sheila, can I ask you why, why isn't it being held over at Court, uh, the county park?
Oh, we thought that it would be more accessible and we were thinking about the businesses and bringing businesses, business downtown.
Okay, again, too, just with what's going on, it's a little bit more of an open space over there at the Courthouse Park. Um,
We have another option, we do have another option um off of Main Street in a parking lot behind the buildings. So that is another option that we are considering.
Let's see then, a- again, that's, that's another option, I, I think you need to nail down your options. Nail down the exact plan and come back to us with the exact plan. Okay? Tweaking this and tweaking that is not how things have been done in the past. Again, I appreciate your effort. Um, but right now, if this was to be voted on, I would vote no right now. I'd much rather, for your sake, table it and bring it back in just a couple of weeks.
Well, Brian, did the um department heads have problems with anything?
The biggest concern with department heads is access in the event of emergency, so that would not create an issue. Um, as long as, like we discussed, there's no permanent barriers or things that would restrict emergency service vehicles from potentially accessing Main Street if they needed to.
Well.
But I.
I agree with Tom, I, I mean, the Arts Council is trying to do a good thing here, they're trying to create an event for us. I mean, this whole year has been nothing but tweaking things because we haven't been able to figure out what's going on tomorrow, so the fact that we may have to make some changes is, it wouldn't surprise me a bit, it wouldn't be surprising if we didn't. And, and we don't even know what's, what August is gonna bring, we don't even know what the governor's gonna say next week about, uh, he hasn't even made a decision on his stay here yet, and that's, that's after this event, so. I like Tom's idea, we block this, we block this day off, I think we, we work with the, the Arts Council to try to make this work, and Sheila's already said that they're willing to work with us and, you know, Sheila's a very reasonable person, they're not, they're not drawing lines in the sand here, they're saying, hey, we want to do this, we want to do it right, we want to be safe, and we want to work with the community, we want to work with merchants, I, it doesn't get much better than that as far as I can see, so I, I'm with Tom, let's block into date, and if we have to tweak a few things here and there, then we tweak them.
I would agree with that, having planned, having planned events before, I respect the fact that you need a sufficient amount of lead time to do advertising and get all the logistics together, so being able to at least know that they've got a date would be helpful, I would think, for, for the Arts Council to, to move forward with planning. Um, and I did just want to note, Sheila, when I looked at the COVID plan, I didn't see any plans for like monitoring the number of people in there specifically, so that might be something to consider with a revised version of the document, is just um flow control of the number of individuals through the entire event at any given time.
And I think I did say the plan was tentative, a preliminary plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Katie Solomon had a hand up.
Um, personally, I like the idea of Courthouse Park, I think it's so much more attractive, and if we're worried about bringing business downtown, it seems that blocking off the street is preventing some business from coming downtown. So I would just put a bug in your ear about that, and if you are um set on using the street, then maybe we should consider to help with your next plan. Um, what kind of space we would think is, if it, should the COVID restrictions still be in place? What kind of space would we want to see around the booth, do we want them fifteen feet apart so that then people can be six feet apart waiting in line? And um, you said that the booths would be marking off spots, but how are those lines not gonna converge? What do people think about how far apart the, the booths should be? Because if we could figure that out, it would be pretty easy to figure out how many booths could fit on that block.
So.
I was looking at the farmer's market and how they set up, and we'd want to be much further apart than they are. So I was at, trying to estimate this morning, actually, when I went down there.
What, what did it look like to you, did it look like fifteen feet apart, something like that, or more?
I think we could do that, yes. Ten to fifteen feet.
I would like, again, as Kat said, number one, um, no matter how many people are gonna get the vaccination, COVID is still out there. So number one, in the past, for example, back last spring or in the summer when there was an event over at Suckitt Park, um, that person submitted a complete COVID plan. We need you to submit a complete COVID plan with an estimate of how many people you're going to be allowing in, and just saying that we're gonna have hand sanitizers on the table. Um, you know, hand sanitizers on the table doesn't mean people are gonna use the hand sanitizers. Um, generally, you need somebody helping to prompt them to use the hand sanitizers. Who's gonna, who's gonna be there to, if there's twenty people gathered all around talking, who's gonna be there to monitor that and tell them that they can't do that? So these, it's, again, these are some of the things that I want to see before I give the okay.
Um, I don't want, I, I don't like to put John McNerney on the spot, but I'm going to now. John, are you working with the Corn Ducky Derby folks, uh, Cortland Service Club on, on that event?
Yes.
Yes, and, and they're, and they're, they're having a COVID plan for that event as well, correct?
They do, um, that is in Suckitt Park, it's on May first, uh, I had a meeting with the committee last Monday and I shared the plan with the mayor and department heads last Wednesday. Um, I'd be more than happy to share some of the aspects of that plan that may apply uh to the Art Fest and uh talk with Sheila, all the programs that we have going on in city parks, it doesn't matter whether it's the Crown City Little League to youth soccer, to events occurring at the, the park uh by Cortland High School, they often, all have to submit a COVID plan that I review and approve, so. Um, I'd be happy to take a look at Sheila's plan and make any recommendations based on some of the best practices out there, but keep in mind, right now, the New York State Department of Health guidance on outdoor gatherings is two hundred folks. So when we address that with uh, the Corn Duck Derby, they came up with a game plan, they have pods where they're going to monitor in Suckitt Park at the start of the Corn Duck Derby and at the end, uh, where they can actually count how many people come into that area, so. Um, i- it takes a lot of planning and a lot of coordination, and it's hard to predict what's going to happen three or four months from now, some of those regulations and guidance that are in place may be lifted.
Yeah. So, so I, I would suggest that, I don't know, maybe we, if we table this, I don't want to table the date, I mean, to be, to be consistent, I, I think we do have to have a COVID plan, John has a good point on that. And, and Sheila, I, I would encourage you to work with John McNerney on that, he, he's done a lot of these and he's really, he stays on top of what's going on, so that would be good to, to, to stay in touch with John on this, I think he can give you some.
I have John's plan and I have been in touch with him.
Okay.
We have communicated.
Super, so, so, you know, if we're gonna table this, just because we need some more details, okay, but I, we, I think we reserve the time and the date and, and let them move forward. So.
That sounds good.
That's my view.
All right, is there a motion to table?
I motioned to table and save the date.
Table and save the date, Katie Solomon, second, John Bennett. Uh, all those in favor of tabling the agenda items till May four? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so Sheila, it, it's good news, you know, you've got support, this is, I think we're all excited about events coming back. Uh, we've got a couple more to discuss, and it's just a matter of working through the details to make sure we're doing it appropriately in a manner that's gonna be safe, and um, weren't happy to sit down with you again and talk through some of the questions that came up tonight, I've been taking notes. Uh, it sounds like John gave you something in terms of COVID safety plan, and I think we're in a good place here.
Thank you, I appreciate all the input.
Yeah, you're welcome, and the date has been saved.
Yeah.
Thank you for planning the event.
Absolutely. And as we move along, so that one's tabled. Next agenda item, resolution approved appointment of Caleb Wright to the Cortland Youth Bureau Advisory Board. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. And it carries. That's a great move, Caleb, just fine individual, he's done some nice things and will continue to in our community. Happy to have him aboard. Uh, number five, discussion on Dairy Day Parade. So we've had some conversations. And present, I see Tess and is Andrea present as well? Uh, very good, Andrea and Tess are the organizers for the annual Dairy Day Parade, and they have a unique potential solution to the whole people gathering in terms of what they can do. Andrea, can you explain to everybody what a reverse parade is?
It's actually a thing, but we'd like to make it a thing. Uh, we've been talking with the Police Department and the Fire Department and, and Mayor Tobin, and what we're hoping to do instead is have our floats be stationary down the sides of South Main Street, is what we've kind of come to the conclusion of. Um, starting at the corner of Port Watson, Tompkins, Main Street, and heading towards Valley View Drive would be the very end of it. Uh, but we would have our floats be stationary on both sides of South Main and have vehicles be able to drive down Main Street instead. So rather than our floats going through, we'd have people coming through, still able to see the floats. Um, that way we can still try to move forward with the Dairy Parade, which is important for our Dairy Community.
All right, so we've had, as Andrea's pointed out, we've had discussion looking at the tentative date of June first, and traditionally the parade starts at six thirty. Um, benefit in terms of South Main less with regard to removal of vehicles or asking people to not park on South Main. Traditionally, there's a lot more people parking on that two-block stretch of Main Street. Uh, five o'clock, street closure, six thirty start to about seven thirty-ish, and people would approach from the north on Main Street, so Main Street would become one-way. Drive down, be able to see floats on the left and the right.
So we're talking about the opposite of usual parade, the people are gonna be the ones traveling down the street, and on the sidewalks are going to be, or on the side of the street are gonna be the floats, et cetera. Is that what we're discussing here?
Yes, and we have.
Go ahead.
Sorry, we had talked with Chief Sandy too about um walkers and how we could carefully get them down. Um, if we do have, because down on South Main, we do have a lot of people who attend just by walking. Um, they could walk down one side of the street on the sidewalk, and there would be a walkway for them to cross over and come back up the other way, uh, so they still would be able to see the, the floats as well.
So they'd be spaced out, I mean, sort of what we just discussed, spent a lot of time with the whole COVID.
Yes.
Plan, is, it would be in place in terms of taking that into account, because that's coming up even sooner than August.
Right, so as far as our participants go, we can ensure that they would be following any protocols we set in place. Um, they would be in their own uh float, is what we're hoping to do, is just have each space blocked off as a float or truck in a float. Um, so they wouldn't be exposed to anybody else, just the people on their float, uh, obviously with a mask as well. The walkers, that is a little bit more of a concern for us. Um, and I don't know how, how we can address that as much. Um, but as far as the participants, we can ensure that they would be following all the protocols safely. Our hope is that more people would actually drive through the parade, is what we were actually looking for. And one of the things that I didn't mention earlier on is we are working to get dairy donations as well. Um, so at the end of the parade, we would give each vehicle a bag of some dairy products, uh, New York State dairy products is what we're hoping for too.
Okay, and I, again, I think it's a great event, and I, I support these events. I just, in my mind, I'm thinking, I, you know, at first when you were discussing it as drive-by, I thought that, that everybody's gonna be safe, that everybody's gonna be the family unit in their car, they already live together anyhow. So that's gonna be safe, the floats will be appropriately spaced so that they're really be safe there. But if we're having wall-to-wall people walking down the sidewalk on the other side of the street, that still is gonna be a, a concern, a safety concern.
So I think the goal is that we will advertise to have people drive if at all possible. Um, and then, you know, our promotional committee, the Dairy Promotion Committee, um, we have a lot of volunteers and um we had talked about stationing um our own volunteers throughout the walking area to move people along quicker, to make sure that like parties are staying separated, um, that need to be saved, you know, stay separated, and then also just moving people so that they're not stopping and trying to chat in groups of people, so just to keep people moving along.
Okay, so, so we can anticipate, when we get the official application, you'll have that COVID plan sort of spelled out in terms of how you plan to address, because you're gonna get a lot of people walking down through there for sure. And, which is, you know, if it's a nice day, that's, that's a good thing too, to have people out, but a- again, you know, we have to go back to the safety side of this, so I, I'm assuming that you'll have that included in your, the application we'll be getting next meeting or some, or shortly, I would assume.
I, I think Mayor Tobin has our application filled out, we did not specify that on the application, I don't think, but we did talk about it when we were talking about it with Chief Sandy yesterday.
Okay, well, given the, the lengthy discussion we just had about the Arts Council, um, Tess, I would suggest that you have something included as far as what the, the COVID plan is, to keep people safe for the folks that are walking.
I agree. Go ahead.
We lose the mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was taking notes.
Okay.
We've uh, we've had a couple of conversations and we've talked about a couple of different locations, this has been a work in progress.
Are they still gonna have the, the vendors like we normally do? Are they gonna be uh, uh exempt this time?
We were not gonna include them this time, uh, we were gonna be pretty, not specific, but we were, uh, we usually in the parade have a lot of walkers, a lot of groups that walk through the parade, and we're gonna make it very um, uh, plain and simple to, for them, that they have to be on a float, that we're not gonna just have people kind of milling around, they, they have to come on a float, which is what the original parade was, was all floats. Um, so we're, you know, they really have a choice of just kind of sitting on a float with their group, or they, they won't be able to participate this time around, uh, but no extra vendors of any sort for this one.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, so we will be looking at a street closure, a little bit more detail in terms of the COVID safety plan, part of the discussion was about where people could walk in terms of, or what direction. And whether or not there would be a need for a sound device permit.
There should be people, they said that there would be people moving people along. We want to make sure that groups are kept separate from each other, that people are masked, if that's still part of the mandate.
Yes, Tess did mention, we do have a lot of volunteers on our committee that are more than willing to help do whatever we need them to at this point to see this happen. Um, so we would definitely have all of our people on hand to help move groups along and, and kindly remind them to mask up if they need to.
I think it would make, it might make people on council feel more comfortable if we knew that you had figured out what number you would need and where they would be stationed, like you really had it mapped out in your minds.
Sure, and we will happily do that, we just got the final word on where we might even be able to have it this year, so we um, we're a little, we're just trying to catch up so that we can get this done. Um, you know, we usually have anywhere from fifteen to twenty volunteers of our own that um participate to line up floats. Um, and since that isn't something that will have to happen this year, we anticipate that we can station them and that we'll have traffic, foot traffic flowing in one direction so that we can keep people moving. And if that means that we have to section it off so that there's only a certain number of people in each section at one time, we can do that.
And if that means that we have to section it off so that there's only a certain number of people in each section at one time, we can do that. Um, that, if that's something that you'd like to see.
I think, I think that would be good in keeping with what John was saying, that the Corn Ducky Derby is doing and what we're asking the Arts Council to do. I think that would be good, but I think your idea of a reverse parade is pretty ingenious, I love it.
Yeah, I think the community's gonna enjoy it, well, people are looking for, the, the people are looking at for opportunities to get out and enjoy some of these events again, so you know, if we can keep them safe, we sure support them, I, I Hey, Mayor, is, uh, the Chief, Sandy or Chief Freeman, have they had any thoughts on this, have you had a chance to talk to them about this?
Well, both have been involved in the conversations, Paul, Sandy, would you like to weigh in? Wayne Frieder?
Sure, um, we have had a couple of conversations and, and the young ladies have brought it out at the end that any walking traffic will be directional, say, north on the east side of South Main and we will cross them uh, down near, uh, Tompkins Street, and then they can turn and head back down, uh, south on the western side of the street. Um, they have volunteers, they have assured us that we'll be able to keep them separated and moved along with masks and so forth. Obviously, we will have to station a certain number of, uh, patrols out there, um, just for crowd control or to ensure that if anything happens, we're there, um, great place for our bicycles. Um, they, we have also talked about, um, the floats will not be handing or anything out to the people, they will not be throwing anything, anything the floats want given to, uh, the attendees will go into bags um, that will be handed off at the end, so that way there's not the streets aren't getting littered with candy or whatever and people running around trying to grab stuff and it'll keep the contact at a, at a minimal.
Alright, so it sounds like we're i- in a similar spot, we're, we're good with the general concepts. Um, in terms of the COVID safety plan for walkers, that's something that we wanna have sorted out. Uh, but otherwise, are there any concerns from council? Because we are similar to the last event in a position where we wanna make sure for the entity to move forward for these uh, volunteers to be able to continue to say, okay, we're, we're good with this, the only question is some of these details, and of course I'm gonna keep working with the organizing individuals to make sure that we're meeting, answering any questions that come forward, I just wanna make sure that we know what all the questions are. Outside of the COVID plan for walkers, are there any other concerns? Tom Michaels.
I would like to perhaps see an update, uh, prior to the event, just, uh, see where everybody's at.
So Andrea and Tess, we can do another Zoom, we're getting pretty good at these. And I think we could probably have something for council by next week. And make sure that we're addressing the concerns so that, uh, similar to the arts event, the concept works, just we're all cautious and rightfully so. But we're working with everybody to make sure we can get done what we need to.
I'm more than willing to send updates as we go along. Uh, we really haven't said anything to anybody without knowing if council was gonna approve it. Um, it's my hopes that a lot of our organizations still wanna participate and put a flow in. I'm not sure how many will be able to, uh, which is why we wanted to address it, you know, hopefully tonight, so that we can get the invitation out to them this week and get things rolling, because we are just about six weeks, I think just about six weeks out from that. Um, but I, I'm more than willing to send updates for every meeting, just let you know where we're at and how we're progressing with it.
Alright, council, any more questions or thoughts? Well, I think we've got two. Well, it's the return, returning events, and we've got two outstanding ones that are in community staples that were presented tonight. Uh, looking forward to seeing one in June and the other in August. Andrea Tess, thank you for joining us this evening, and we can connect and talk about when, when you're free so that we can discuss again.
Okay, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Very good. Uh, agenda item number six, discussion on a community cleanup, and this is something that has been pointed out at the last council meeting, previous council meetings, that over the last couple of months, in particular, when the snow has melted, some of the trash flowers pop up, it's a little bit more obvious, and we had those windy days. So there's recycling that has disappeared from bins out into the community. Um, there, there is a number of people who are interested and wanna participate. And we have the opportunity, first weekend in May. I've had discussion with a couple of different groups, including some of the student groups up on campus. Uh, there's at least one church organization that is interested and a couple others within the community. May 1st and May 2nd have been put forward. And I believe May 2nd, which is a Sunday, has been preferred by some. In the interest of keeping people spaced out, looking at potentially doing signups for May 1st and May 2nd, morning of May 1st and the morning of May 2nd. And if people are interested, meeting at the corner of Port Street and Main, Port Street and Main Street. Uh, I've put out 9:00 AM, but we can be flexible on time if that works. Council thoughts?
Just like to encourage everybody in the city to clean up their own properties and a street in front of their properties. Whether they rent or whether they own, just to generate some pride of place and whether you dropped it there or somebody threw it out a car window, let's just clean up, clean up Cortland.
Absolutely, so how this works, uh, Nick Novy?
Hey, I, I just wanted to comment, Katie, did you see, um, that, uh, I think Clayton Ave was swept either with a street super yesterday or the day before?
Okay, I went up it today and did notice that it looked better, thank you.
That wasn't because you asked about it, it was, a- as soon as I read your email, I drove up there and it had just been swept, so that finally, I'm one step ahead for once.
Yeah.
Don't get comfortable being there, Nick.
So Mayor, you wanna have two different days, Saturday the first and Sunday the second, is that what you're suggesting?
So what we've done, um, yeah, we, we can give the opportunity that would space people out. Um, and Bruce, if you're willing to work, tag team this, if you wanna take one, I would take the other or vice versa. And basically, what we have done is, we have provided a special color trash bag so that it's collected during a special pickup. And, uh, latex or vinyl gloves for participants. And we're asking people to stay between the curb, basically in the right of way, from the curb up through the sidewalk and picking up what trash and litter they see. Uh, when people arrive, we have a sign-in and people disperse in different directions. And if people are 10, 15 minutes later than some others, and we say, hey, we already know you have a, a group that's walking up Main Street, but we really could use some people walking down Port Street. And, um, our experience, we did not do this last year. But my experience with this is we've had a tremendous impact on the appearance and the cleanliness of our city. It always feels good to do something that benefits us all.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mayor, I'll throw this out there for other people's thoughts. I wouldn't mind, um, heading up, uh, May 2nd, I'm gonna be helping out over in, uh, the park on May 1st with the Derby. I, I would, wouldn't mind, you know, taking, having people sign up with me on the corner of Court and Main on the 2nd, I would suggest maybe 12 to 2, so people that wanna go to church have, they can get church and, and then, you know, we're not starting quite so early, um. So I, I would, you know, be willing to ta- take people's names and, you know, make sure they have masks on and, and send them on their way when they tell me they wanted to go, and then I could, actually, I use my own truck and swing by and pick up the bags of garbage that they, um, collected and for those two hours, if that, if that sounds reasonable to people. I don't mind doing that. 12 to 2 seem more reasonable on Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and so I'm assuming you're thinking two hours on Saturday too, Mayor, is that what your thoughts were?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll leave that to you. And I will, I'd be happy to help out on the, on the Sunday. And, and be there with clipboard at hand and get people's names and they can tell me where they're headed and making sure that we're keeping our distance and spacing and, um, being safe.
Very good, and as I said, we've had reach out from a couple of community groups and I can reach, I can get back in contact with them. Uh, prefer to make sure that they formally commit before talking about them. And if we've got enough volunteers, I know that this, in, in the space of an hour or an hour and a half, you can cover a significant chunk of our major roadways. Just alls it takes is two people on either side of the street, you go for a nice walk on a sunny day and you end up with a bag full of trash and a clean street.
And, uh, John McDurnough, I'll be in touch with you for some safety tips with the COVID, since you're sort of our vote-two guy right now on a lot of that.
Further discussion. Leads us to agenda item number seven, I think we might start moving along in a little bit more of a clip here. Uh, consideration of resolution demonstrate support of inequitable Cortland by promoting the Cortland County YWCA Stand Against Racism Week, which is this week, April 19th through 24th of 2021. Uh, motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. Um, so it's actually approached by one of the employees at the YWC, who I'm not related to, about participating and being active and engaged in this, and I was really impressed and pleased, we had a couple of phone calls. Uh, there is different, there are different focuses each day. Um, so today, we had the opportunity reading a proclamation to talk about how we value equity in our community. And I believe tomorrow, there's an opportunity for people to share stories. And I would ask council, there's a pledge, and the pledge is to fight for an equitable community. I've signed the pledge, I would encourage others, not just council, but anybody sign on as well, because the only way community works is when everybody is a part of it.
Where do we find it?
Uh, YWCA website, which I embarrassed to say I don't have in front of me, and I should have put that into the into the agenda item. Further discussion. Council, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number eight, resolution to recognize and appropriate funding reimbursements from FEMA in the amount of $32,380.95 for the federal cost share of the installation of the fire alarm system at the headquarters. And that's the fire station for the Fire Department Budget Line A 3410-54200, motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number nine, resolution recognize and appropriate in the year 2020, $54,906 and a penny received from, uh, nice New York State DEC in connection to the food reuse and recycle grant. $45,567.35 to Budget Line G 8110-541500 to reimburse Seven Valley Health Coalition and $9,338.60 to reimburse wastewater staff expenses, motion to consider. Kat McCarthy, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. Uh, Bruce is present, and I believe we have a couple of, and I appreciate your very strong patience. A couple of guests as well. Bruce, let me pass the baton to you, Bruce Adams.
Uh, yes, uh, first, I wanna explain the reason for it being 2020. Uh, we got the first funding from DEC just in January of this year, but because the expenses and invoices were dated last year, uh, that's when it needs to, uh, be registered. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Susan William and Gabrielle DiDomenico for, uh, coming this evening. And I thought, uh, that you might enjoy a, uh, an update and status report, I've been terribly impressed both by the scope of their vision and the, uh, the effectiveness that they get out of this funding. Uh, go ahead, please, Susan.
Thanks, Bruce, we appreciate not only getting paid for the work that we did in 2020 on the grant, so that's exciting, thank you. Um, and, you know, I'm listening to all of the discussion you've already had tonight, you know, things have looked a little bit different over the last year and a half than what we had really anticipated when we wrote the work plan. Um, but I'm going to turn it over, um, to my coworker Gabrielle DiDomenico, she's the project, uh, lead for this program and I'll, I'll let her just touch on just a few key points, we've done a lot of different things, but you all have been talking for a long time, so we won't take too much more of your time tonight.
Hi, everybody, good evening, like Susan said, I'm Gabrielle DiDomenico at Seven Valleys Health Coalition, and I'll just give you a quick rundown of kind of to date some of the highlights with our food rescue program, so it's officially dubbed Seven Valleys Food Rescue. Um, to date, we've been able to donate and rescue over 19,000 pounds of food, which is pretty awesome for just getting started. Um, we also have been able to secure, um, about 25, uh, community partners, which is great. And so those partners include like who you might think, local food pantries and, uh, the free meal distribution sites, but also some really interesting partners that we didn't quite expect, like, um, low-income daycare centers, the correctional facility as well. Uh, we have a growing pool of volunteers, and we've had some really awesome volunteers step up and do some shifts and be really patient with us as we try to figure everything out. Another partnership that we're really excited for as well is, um, we were able to connect with the Cortland Free Library and start a partnership with them, and that looks a little bit like them um, having a display of composting and food waste books available. And as well as these really cool, uh, take-home composting kits, which is just basically this little 2.5-gallon bucket, and in the bucket has a composting guide as well as a small thing to take a survey and a magnet of do's and don'ts, it goes on your fridge of composting and some other goodies in there. Um, and so that's been really great, we've had some great feedback from Jen, the director at the library, saying that community members are just really excited about it. And we'll also be part of that composting kit, is also kind of the end game of actually getting them to compost. The little kit is just the little bucket, it means just like, you collect your scraps in as far as like, if you're in the kitchen, that's your kitchen bucket, and then you take it out to your larger composting bin, and so we've been able to connect with uh, the Village of Homer and collaborate with them, and so they have these earth machine bins, um, composting bins that we have been able to purchase off of them, so we can offer community members those bins as well. Um, we're really prioritizing city members, and we have 50 of those as well. Um, yeah, like Susan said, there's just, we've been kind of running and gunning, especially with COVID kind of sped up our timeline for food rescue. Uh, but we've been really honored to be a part of the community and to be doing this work, really excited by it. And, uh, we're hopeful that this summer will bring, uh, just the next level of what we wanna do programming-wise.
The only other thing I wanted to add is that in addition to the, the great, you know, individuals that we have volunteering to help with, you know, moving this 9,000 pounds of food that, uh, our staff has rescued over the last year, um, but also up until recently, we didn't have a firm plan for a physical location, so we have been borrowing cold storage space from both the SUNY Cortland ASC and then also from Main Street Farms, they have been amazing partners, we wouldn't have been able to do what we've done without them. Um, but gratefully, the, um, Homer Ave Plaza, the YMCA has been working with us pretty closely recently. And we are planning on moving into that space, a food rescue program, to be able to have the cold storage there and um, dry storage and processing, like, um, you know, being able to receive and distribute donations from there, hopefully our goal is maybe by the end of the summer, um, you know, knock on wood, best not to plan, maybe the, that's the best-case scenario, is we're hoping by the end of the summer, we'll have a physical location.
Sandy.
So I have a question.
Katie.
If people are interested in the take-home composting bins, they go to the library to get them? And if they're interested in one of the 50, I think you called them earth-moving bins, the larger bins? How do they get one of those?
So, we're just about to kind of advertise, do a full push with advertising for kind of the whole kit and caboodle, if you will. So yes, the library just put out their display, what's the day, Tuesday, like yesterday? Um, and so at the library, there's a sign that says, you know, who you need to call and contact, so it's Tanya, Tanya DiGennaro at Homer Village. Um, and I have the contact information, if any, you can email her or call her. Um, and so we're also gonna have the smaller buckets, uh, available at our office, as well as they're available at the Village of Homer. So that's up and coming, I'll be doing a big advertising push, you know, end of this week into next week. We just got those pieces into place. Um, so that's really exciting, and so the Homer can be the one-stop shop if you wanna get the smaller bucket and the bigger earth machine bin as well, so it's all there.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll add in that that's a really exciting program, um,
I'll add in that that's a really exciting program. Um, it's awesome to hear all these updates and this great work towards uh, food waste prevention. Um, and I wanted to ask too, with the earth machines, those are the ones that kind of look like Darth Vader's helmet for people who don't know which ones those are. Um, but they, I, I'm just curious if you're doing any education beyond the print materials that go with the toolkit? Is there like a composting beginners class or anything like that for folks who may not have had as much experience uh, wheeling and dealing with one of those?
Yeah. So we have partnered with Soil and Water. We're going to be using Jared Popoly and he's going to be doing some uh, presentation. So we actually have a recording presentation on our Facebook page. So um, kind of the composting branch of this project is dubbed Crown City Composters. And we're just about to take, like bring that into the public eye here. Um, it's been a long time coming, a lot of pieces to put into place. Um, but Jared signed on with us and, and we love him. And so he's been doing a great job with that. So there's already like a pre-recorded, they can go on there and also our website as well. And listen to like a composting one-on-one, but we're also going to do one to two presentations um, through the library partnership as well. And so they'll advertise at the library that um, community members can sign up. And we're going to be doing those, I'm hoping in May, early May, in a couple of weeks. Uh, one probably like a lunchtime presentation and hopefully also one at evening time so that community members can catch that.
Very nice.
Good. Counsel, any further questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Lot of detail for a simple budget transfer, but it's really great to hear about the wonderful things that are being done. Uh, Gabrielle, Susan, Bruce, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Agenda item number 10, resolution approved buyout of the five-year lease with Enterprise Fleet for three two thousand seventeen Chevy SUVs. They're currently used as unmarked police vehicles. The buyout is approximately twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. And funds would come from the twenty-one budget line for new police vehicles. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second Bruce Titler, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Number 11, resolution approved entering into a new five-year lease with Enterprise Fleet for three twenty-one Chevy SUVs to use as unmarked vehicles. Annual cost is seventeen thousand dollars. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second Bruce Titler, discussion.
I just, I just want to say thank you to the chief for being creative and finding a way to use what little money he has to create, uh, what uh, eight new vehicles, I think, something like that. So you know, that's right out of the gate. Thank you, chief. Good work. I support it.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number number 12, resolution approval local law, section two fourteen of the plumbing code for the city of Cortland. Uh, motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second Jackie Chapman, discussion. So this was the public hearing earlier. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And agenda item number thirteen. Consideration of resolution to eliminate chapter five dash twenty of the Charter of the City of Cortland. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second John Bennett, discussion. This is tied into the other one. We're adding something. So we're changing. We're actually deleting something. Almost never happens in government. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number fourteen, resolution to approve lawn mowing, sidewalk shoveling and garbage pickup bid and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with a uh, individual slash company. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second Katie Solomon, discussion. And this is a contract that we've had before, a potential new vendor. No change to the R P. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Uh, Captain Ten K, thank you for your eloquence.
Glad I could help.
Fifteen and sixteen, if there are questions from counsel that we need to adjourn into executive session, please let me know. Um, let me preface this. The city uh, has been well managed in terms of what we do with our employees via labor union contracts. However, department heads and then there's a couple of other people who have not been covered by some of these contracts. And there's been some times where there's been some gray areas. So what we are doing is we are signing letters of understanding. Uh, essentially contracts with regard to compensation. Uh, and the intention here is to make sure that everybody's clear. Protects the employee and it protects the city, which is protecting the taxpayers. So agenda item number fifteen, resolution to allow the mayor to sign an agreement with Rick Van Doncel Corporation Council memorializing compensation and benefits.
Mayor, I would request we go into executive council to discuss these contracts.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn into executive session. Do I have a second? Uh, Troy Beckwith. Uh, all those in fav- in favor of adjourning into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Give me a minute here. I did not prepare room.
You want people to attend other than counsel? Or do you want to exclude Matt and I?
Um. People to, for this, I suppose if we call you, I'll call you if I need anybody to come in. Counsel, do you see it?
Not yet. Nope. Now.
Hang on, here we go. Three, four, five. Six, seven. Now do you see it?
Yes.
All right. I apologize for the delay. That was me. Okay, good. Want to make sure I'm unmuted. I make that mistake frequently. And let's start accounting for council members. One, two, Bruce present. Sometimes people get lost on the way out of the room. Oh, there he is.
I'm here.
One, two, three. John Bennett? Yeah, sometimes people get lost on the way from one room to the next. Happens upstairs in these meetings and it happens virtually. Do I gotta yell for him? John, where are you?
John's lost in space.
Oh, I see Jackie joined us. There you go back to the room and see. John's confused.
Looks like he hit left meeting.
Totally.
God has left the building.
All right, now, now I closed the room. So it's closing in fifty seconds. Um. There he is.
All right, there he is.
Nice try, John, but you gotta get quicker than that to get it through the exit door as opposed to going from the breakout room to the main room. Motion to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second? Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are back into our regular session. Agenda item number fifteen, consideration of resolution allow the mayor into an agreement with Rick Van Doncel Corporation Council memorializing compensation and benefits. Motion to consider Katie Solomon, second John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number sixteen, resolution allow the mayor to sign an agreement with Matt Cook, Director of Administration and Finance, memorializing compensation and benefits. Motion to consider Katie Solomon, second uh, Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Agenda item number seventeen, resolution to negotiate a one-year extension with Absolutely Clean for cleaning services at City Hall. Motion to consider. Opposed? Bruce Titler, second John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor. Oh, Tom Michaels.
Now, now I heard a rumor that the uh, the courts were gonna bail on the, on the city and go back to the courthouse.
That, that has been discussed, Tom.
Okay, all right.
That has been discussed. As far as the cleaning contract, um, we're pretty happy with the cleaning services at City Hall. I'll make this short and sweet. Uh, you know, their, their attention to detail, especially with the additional sanitation needed for COVID. Uh, they, we bid the, the contract originally in eight, two thousand eighteen. Um, and the other bids that came in were much higher. Absolutely Clean has jumped through all the necessary requirements with the past stamp approval for security reasons. Uh, as well as jumping through the hoops for the actual hours of accessibility to clean. They're onsite six days a week and I would really like to keep them there uh, for a nominal cost. Uh, you know, a nominal increase for at least another year instead of reinventing the wheel on this.
Did you want to go longer than one year, Nick?
Um, I mean, I, I have no complaints with that. Uh, I, I'd have to talk to uh, you know, Joseph Hicks, the, the owner and operator of the company. Uh, but I think right now he definitely wanted to continue his services and we thought just saying, yep. I think Rick wants to speak.
Mr. Van Doncel.
Yeah, one year will give us an idea of what happens when the court moves. And no matter if the court moves or not, there's still going to be the same space to have to clean.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So that's not going to change. The, the court doesn't matter. They just, it'll just be the same space. So I think one year will do it. We'll know what's going on and we'll be in good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good. And number eighteen, resolution for project PIN three ninety-five zero seven zero from Nick Novy, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, one hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marchiselli program aid eligible costs of a transportation federally locally administered project and appropriate funds. Uh, motion to consider. John Bennett, second Katie Solomon, discussion. Nick, anything you want?
Sure. The, the quick and dirty on this is there's, there's some funding that's available through the state. Um, and uh, this is kind of one of these smaller programs that kind of got lost in this big gateway initiative. Uh, basically, uh, my, my knowledge of it is uh, I, I can't speak too much on the actual construction because some of the items have been taken care of uh, in the actual gateway project, but there's still some connectivity stuff on River Street, a ped bridge. Uh, the interconnectivity of Clinton Ave extension, uh, that basically the state wants to give us money, money for. Uh, and I think we should, we should take it. Um, the, the other, our, our portion, the city's portion. Uh, it, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but I believe that that is a hundred percent being leveraged uh, by EPA funding. So it's not going to come out of the city's coffers. Uh, and it's basically a pedestrian, uh, pedestrian bike type initiative to make some of the, the park system a, a much more walkable, uh, bikeable um, avenue for people. I think it's a good program and I, I don't think it's going to cost us anything. Uh, and this is ju- this is not for construction. This is, the resolution is simply to allow us to start the selection process for design.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Yep, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Let's roll right into the next one. Preferred streeting. Preferred street infrastructure project applications for twenty twenty-one consolidated funding application CFA round. So what we're talking about here is the governor has announced that there is another consolidated funding uh, round and we want to put forward our best foot. Uh, Nick, do you have a recommendation?
Sure. Yes, I, I, we, we looked at a bunch of different uh, avenues entering and exiting the city. Uh, we are targeting Homer Ave as the next step in the gateway corridor process due to subsurface aging uh, utilities. Um, and this, this roadway fits, fits nicely into, I think, the narrative that they're going to want to hear. Uh, specifically Homer Ave was previously discussed with Cortlandville, the Village of Homer and Cortland. Uh, the city of Cortland previously were choosing to submit CFA or I'm asking you to choose Homer Ave for the CFA in this area in it, in an effort to redevelop uh, an unserved portion of the city. Beautify one of the main entrances, replace at, at-risk infrastructure. Uh, I know the water offhand is, is really um, obsolete in that, in that area. Uh, provide better connectivity heading in and out of the city and also support uh, you know, the, the expansion of the Guthrie Medical Center. Uh, I think this is a good way to go and also, you know, while improving an aesthetic peel, the aesthetics of, of the Homer Ave corridor. Um. The sewer, storm sewer and sanitary, storm sewer and sanitary sewer are probably original. Um, or, or maybe a little more updated than that, but I, I think that this goes, this is the, this is the avenue, no pun intended, that we should, we should choose um, for, for those reasons. Also, you know, this going in this direction will, will allow us uh, for additional federal infrastructure money and possibly even uh, some COVID water relief uh, funding. So uh, I, I, I would say the next one on the list, the runner-up was Groton Ave. But I think that we have additional funding um, from, from some other sources to take care of that. And I think if we get Homer, Groton, Clinton, Maine, that this fits in very well.
Nick?
Yes.
What do you mean that the water is obsolete over there?
Uh, I, I shouldn't have said absolutely inadequate. Um, basically the condition of the water on Homer Ave is compromised. It's an eight-inch cast uh, water main uh, that's in need of replacement. There's a few leaks already that we have identified and fixed and a few more that we're having trouble locating. Um, the joints are most likely uh, leaded, or I shouldn't say that, non-copper uh, joints in that area that, that we probably should um, you know, concentrate our efforts on.
Are Homer and Cortlandville still on board to work with us on that project?
I believe so. I could definitely look into that a little further.
Please, please do. Secure. Yeah.
See, the, the good thing about the Homer Ave as far as with the CFA, you've got numerous qualifying things that, for the state that they want to see. And Homer Ave pretty much checks up. I think there's at least five boxes. One of them, for example, again, the environmental. Um, you got the river there. So that helps. Um, low, moderate income area. So revitalizing the street, that helps. Um, everything that the CFA committee, the central regional committee looks at, the Homer Ave new project checks off.
Yep, I, I totally agree, John. I, I think that uh, that's what I kind of was referring to. Maybe I didn't explain it, but the narrative that they want to hear for this funding i- is really, is really o- on point in this, in, in this avenue.
Yep, and it's, my understanding, it would come from the city line to Madison Street, correct?
I, I, I believe so. I, I mean, the further, the better, uh, but.
Yeah. Because I think Matt's got enough funding, or he's close to enough funding to go from Main Street up Groton Ave to the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, you've, you've, you've got my support for the Homer Ave. That's, that's the next gateway, so.
Yeah. It's a long time coming. It's a continuation of what happened, you know, twenty years ago, when we cleared the, uh, junkyard out of that exit. You know, to try to make the gateway to the city a little more attractive. So I, I think this is fabulous.
Sure.
Nick, do you know anything about the, uh, the bridge that's going in, uh, that might be, what, a Cortlandville project?
Yeah, I, I see it every day when I drive through there. And I, I observed that huge crane over there, and, um, I, I don't know that much about it. Uh, I wish I did, but I, I, I'm interested as you are, so I could definitely look into it.
All right, I'll, I'll swing by it, uh, sometime, uh, this week or so. Yep.
Court, court council has his hand up.
Devin involved a little bit with that, and, uh, and Chris too. That is a dredging project. That, that's a temporary bridge across the river so they can dredge. This is a continuation of the project across the street that is taking the, uh, do, uh, by, uh, NICEAG uh, to clean up their old coal-fired, um, generating plants, uh, and they're go all the way down to about Miller Street.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, this is all temporary, which you're seeing, but it's all about cleaning up the Tiofne Ogle River right in that air, general area.
That's great. Oh, okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Very good. Next up, discussion and possible consideration of a resolution to adopt the city of Cortland's public employer health insurance plan.
So moved.
Consideration resolution. Do we have a second? Bruce Titler, second, Katie Silliman, discussion.
Good plan. Very thorough.
Yep, Mac answered all my questions. I, I think, I agree, very thorough. Now we have something in place.
Yeah.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And this is in the event of another pandemic that we have a plan, and we can put it forward saying that we are well-prepared. Number twenty-one. Further discussion regarding the million dollars that the city may be receiving from the federal government this year and potential for another million next year. Uh, I'm just gonna open the floor up.
Mayor.
Uh, yes.
Before you do that, did you skip an item? Jeff Smith. Yeah.
Ah.
I tried to message you, but it wasn't accepting my message.
Ah, res- resolution to appoint, resolution for council to approve the recommendation of Jeff Smith to the Board of Assessment Review. So the Board of Assessment Review meets annually, and the way this board works, if a property owner in the city has a complaint about their property's assessment, they can apply to the assessor at any point in time. Brian Fitz is the city assessor, and throughout the year, they have the opportunity to agree their assessment. And annually, the board meets, uh, because maybe somebody did approach Mr. Fitz, they did not like it, so they have the opportunity for a second opinion, so to speak. Similar to how we've got a planning board, if they don't like the answer from the planning board, they can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. So the Board of Assessment Review meets once a year, and they hear grievances from property owners of their assessment. Uh, Mr. Smith, I've known for a couple of years, actually have spoken with him quite a bit in the last couple of months. He's been interested in serving in a capacity. I've talked about a couple of different boards and commissions, but I thought this would be an appropriate one based upon our discussions. Um, and taking into account the city's needs, because we actually have two vacancies. And if anybody is interested, or if anybody knows of somebody who's interested, call me. Uh, Jeff was also one of the co-organizers to last year's recognition for, uh, people of color who own businesses, uh, which we had last, I think it was July. So that's actually where I started to get to know Jeff, and gotten to know him pretty well, and he's done some other nice things on behalf of the city.
Does he own a local business?
Uh, no, he is employed, and in terms of the Board of Assessment Review, this is for, um, any property owner.
No, I understand that. Just very little information on the application, and I, I don't know him at all. And, um, I'm glad to hear you vouch for him because I just wanted to hear more about the man before I voted.
Very good. Yeah, if there are questions, more than happy to answer. But as I said.
Yeah, I, I echo what Katie said, but since you're vouching for the man, that, that goes a long ways with me, Mayor. But in the, in the, in the, the, as I, I was trying to pull it right up here, and I couldn't. Um, as I recall, the application, you know, what qualifies you for this, or something along those lines, there was, there was nothing in there. I mean, it was completely blank. It was just basically his name and address, and so, you know, I mean, I don't know if there are a lot of qualifications to be on this or not, but wha- what does this mean? What's the, what, what qualifications does he bring to, to this?
So the, uh, it does require a training. There's a couple. When somebody is appointed to the board, it does require a couple of hour training. Uh, so we would go through that, uh, the short length in terms of the application is probably part because my request was late for him to fill it out. Um, and we have been talking about a couple of different things and shifting gears from another potential board or commission to this one. Um, part based upon interest and part based upon what, what I designated is, okay, this is a strong need in terms of the city. Um, in terms of the Board of Assessment Review, it's a fair amount of, I guess, common sense with regard to if somebody is challenging their assessment, they should be bringing forward, not just saying, hey, I don't think I have an appropriate assessment. They need to say, here's why.
Okay.
Well, there's a fair amount of, uh.
You have to bring the comparables and everything else, other properties to your property. It's, it's really extent to, to appeal your, uh, property tax, or, you know, value, so.
And the training probably maps that all out.
And the training helps give the guidance. It's, uh, the, the board is instrumental because it can either uphold or potentially overrule the assessor's uh, evaluation. And honestly, I, I think we've been doing quite well in terms of the uh, the board and, well, our assessor is, he's, he's good.
Yes.
We haven't had, we haven't had a lot of challenges because we, we have a very well-qualified assessor.
My wife used to sit on that board, uh, a while back. Of course she worked, of course she worked in a, a real property tax office too, so.
Well, we do have another vacancy. I'll tell Cheryl to jump on.
I'll ask her.
Jump on the internet machine and fill out the application on the city website.
Yeah.
And we typically do have a, uh, board vacancy here or there, so. If anybody else is wondering, hey, is there something I can do to serve the city? Yes, there's always things that we can get people engaged and involved in. Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you get a first and a second, a motion, a second?
Let's back up. We have a motion to consider. I thought I did, but I did not write down initials. So let's go with John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman. Now, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Sorry, Devin. Thank you for, uh, checking on them. Twenty-one. Now, who wants to talk about a million dollars?
I do.
Katie gets to start.
So I've been talking to people, and the big things that come up for my constituents are a dog park, um, which might work in with, um, with what Nick's talking about and the continuation of the, the linking of the parks. That would be nice to put in a dog park. And sidewalks. Sidewalks are the number one issue. Sidewalks and cutbacks for people who have disabilities, really being vigilant about our sidewalks. That is something that everybody in the city could appreciate. It would make the city look better. My third point is that the housing committee years ago came up with a plan with Max Health, um, he had tobacco settlement money to set, to have a pool of money to help middle-income people improve their, the, the appearance of their properties, um, to try and make neighborhoods more attractive. Um, I spoke to Meldrum's at the time, and they were all on board with this idea. And they love the idea of helping out with, um, offering paint at a reduced price. I think it would be great if we could set aside some money for people to paint their houses. Our winters are really tough on houses. I'm getting mine painted this summer. It's very expensive. That's exorbitant for people who are, you know, coming out of COVID, maybe had some, um, trouble being laid off, might have kids in, um, higher education, they're paying those bills. It is really expensive, but if we got some more houses painted, it would really improve the look of the city. And I want to encourage pride of place in Portland, and I think if we did that, it would also extend to our college students. So, um, I'm in favor of working on putting some money into the sidewalk program to extend that. Doing a dog park, these are not, these would not take tons of money. We could get sponsors for the dog park and, um, and having some sort of paint pool of cheap but quality paint, collaborating with local businesses, maybe Lowe's, maybe Meldrum's, to, um, help people paint their houses.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
I haven't heard the dog park, um, Katie, so that's great that you brought that up. I'm also hearing sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalks, and, you know, infrastructure, um. You know, I, I like your idea of the painting. I, I would, I don't know if we can use, I don't know what we can use all the money for yet, so there's a lot of still unresolved, um, answers for us, but I'd like the brainstorming of the ideas. And anything that, any kind of fun we could help people, um, improve their, how, the housing stock. And if you, you take some walk around some of these streets, and you're, you're right, if you, if you, if you clean, if you had a nice sidewalk and replace the steps and, 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 um, replace the porch or improve the porch and put a coat of paint on it, it, it looks, it would look fantastic, you know, and, and so I'm all in favor of those kinds of things. I don't know what the federal government's gonna say about this, but I like those ideas. And I'm still throwing out broadband, although the governor has saying now, I'm, you know, we're still trying to find out what he means by high speed and, you know, the fifteen dollar a month and how that's gonna, how that's all gonna shake out. But I, I'm thinking maybe we can look at how we might be able to have some more hotspots around the city for people for Wi-Fi, so. Those are, those are my thoughts, and, you know, I'll stop there.
Well, I forgot to add that you and I are both big advocates of the code office too, and they, they have said they need help, and this would be a good way to, um, to help them out.
Right. I will say one thing, and just to make it very clear, one thing I'm not in favor of this, at this point, Mayor, is using this money for, um, salaries, because I just don't think it's sustainable. I mean, this is an opportunity to use this money for some things we haven't been able to do in the past, and now maybe we can, or, or set up some funds to keep it continuing for a few years later. But, you know, if we use it and throw it for salaries, then I think it's, I think that, that, I think that'd be a huge mistake, so I'll just go on record for that.
Yeah, please, yeah, uh, keep in mind that this is all taxpayer money, and it came from taxpayers, so and it should be, uh, directed to benefit the taxpayers of this community, regardless of what we come up with.
Yes.
Is there any timeframe been mentioned when the guidelines for this will be out?
Yeah, there is. I think it has to be spent by twenty twenty-four, maybe, something like that. There is a, there is an end date initially that you had, so we do have some time on this. That's, that's a good point, Troy. So we don't have to do this quickly. I think we have to do it correctly. This is, this really requires some, some serious.
What about the guidelines on what we can use it on? When's that gonna be?
Well, uh, that's something, I don't have an answer to that. Initially, it came out, it was very broad. Infrastructure, broadband, and a few other categories, and I don't know if infrastructure was exactly spelled out either, you know, what that means. So there's still some, there's still some work, there's still some answers yet that we don't have.
Ask this to Mac.
I would expect them in two weeks because the money to non-entitlement cities, or no, excuse me, the money to entitlement cities is gonna start rolling out uh, within, it, within three weeks, so I'm expecting these things better be out within the next two weeks, or this is gonna be a real mess.
So my point being, you know, no sense of jumping to all these, I mean, they're all good ideas, I'm in favor of all of them, but I mean, until we get a guideline, we're, you know.
Yeah, we can't, we can't nail anything down, but I, I want to get the whole thought process going so we could sort of already have some ideas in a hopper, and then we can see if they're, if, if it's like Tom said, you know, the biggest bang for our buck, benefit the most people in the community, and, and if they're, and if, and if we're allowed to use the money that way, so we don't have to start that discussion, you know, down the road. We've already started that discussion.
Believe me, I think the eight of us can come up with, uh, uh, ways to spend a million dollars.
Buy a unit of plywood.
Yeah, I would be interested to understand, um, what projects we have put off to date that could be used for this. Um, roads is one thing that comes to my mind that I often hear, uh, from residents about the condition of our roads, and I wonder if that's something else that we might wanna consider. I wholeheartedly agree with the sidewalks as well. That's one I hear often, um, sidewalk conditions, road conditions are big things that are on people's minds.
Taking notes.
Can we hear from Chief Sandy?
Thank you, Katie. Um, there is some equipment that we can never afford that this would, would help us with, like license plate readers, which are like twenty thousand dollars apiece, and we can never budget for them. Um, and they're a huge impact on safety for traffic throughout the city and apprehending people that may be wanted somewheres. Um, also, the Main Street camera project has been, um, stalled for several years, and there are some critical areas that need, um, cameras. So with Main Street being redone, um, additional cameras in that area would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, and we will continue to talk with department heads, and that'll be the appropriate venue for department heads to bring forward concerns and potential areas. Further discussion. All right, good opportunities. We're gonna have to make sure that we're planning and covering what we need to cover first. Let me see here. Discussion regarding search process for the super position of Superintendent of Public Works. Uh, we received the intent to retire from our current Superintendent of Public Works, and the process after a very strong career with the city. Like to thank Chris for his efforts over the last, my God, number of years, and, um, I had questions, I was able to answer them and, um, answer questions that people sometimes didn't think there would be answers. So it's a, another department head retiring, wish him the best in terms of his retirement. Uh, will be a little bit lesser for losing him. There's gonna be some big shoes to fill. However, we do have a process for filling the position of Superintendent for Public Works, and it's clear in the charter that the board for the Public Works Department would make a recommendation of up to three people who are qualified. Um, currently, the County Personnel Department is helping to collect and sift through any potential applications, and only. And only qualified applicants then would go to the board. Uh, the board then would be responsible for forwarding up to three names to the mayor. The mayor would then have the responsibility of sharing with council a potential candidate or a recommended candidate, if you will. And I think it worked, worked pretty well with our last search. What I would like to add is the opportunity for a public interview for at least one of the candidates. And there would be some questions potentially posed, you know, some traditional questions regarding an interview process. And also questions that can be posed from the general public. So if you're a member of the general public and you have questions that you would like to have asked of potential candidates for the position of superintendent of public works, please send them to me directly. My email, B Tobin at Cortland dot org. So my first initial, B and T O B I N at Cortland dot org. If you can't remember that. Mayor at Cortland dot org. And we're looking to do something so that we're able to, uh, make sure that we're continuing to build the trust and the confidence that the general public has in city governments and our city employees. And I'm absolutely confident that we will have a very well qualified candidate when all is said and done. Questions from council. Cat McCarthy.
I just wanted to clarify, um, this mirrors the same process that we've used for our other, for recently hiring other department heads as well, correct?
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right.
I have a question then. Is, is, I can't remember, is this, uh, civil service requirements for this job? So people have to have a certain, uh, civil service qualification to apply for this job to begin with?
Well, they can apply, but to get through the gatekeepers over at county personnel, they need to meet the qualifications.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I, I respect, you know, the process that you wanted to go through with the other two, uh, recently hired department heads. I would, I would respectfully ask that we do what we have to do legally in terms of posting this and go through the process, absolutely. But I don't think we need to draw this out a whole long, long period of time. We're coming up on construction season. Um, we have people in house that know these projects inside out that would take somebody from outside, way outside, a long time to bring up the speed, so. You know, and I don't think anybody's gonna be upset if, if we're able to, to maybe make this process a little quicker than the other process because uh, we have a highly qualified in-house candidate, in my opinion, and, and that's, I'd like to proceed there as quickly as possible.
Very good. Message received. Bruce.
I tend to agree with, uh, Bruce. Just returning the favor, Bruce.
Very good. We can continue discussion. We are close in terms of what we need to do. Uh, next agenda item, COVID nineteen and update. Uh, we are having discussions and starting to have discussions with department heads about protocols as people are becoming vaccinated and, you know, the caseload has been significantly lower than what we were experiencing two months ago. After Easter, you know, I had a concern, I know some others did St. Patrick's Day Easter, about what the numbers would look like. Uh, things are looking good and we still, it's still light at the end of the tunnel. But hopefully everybody is doing their part that we continue to work together as a community. I'm very comfortable sharing, I had my second vaccination shot this past Saturday. Quick, easy, uh, shoulders still a little sore. But with everything that is going on in our community and knowing that there are many people that do have strong concerns, my part, getting the shot was important. So by getting that done, um, it's a little thing that I can do to help others feel safe, then I feel like it's worthwhile.
Mayor, I couldn't agree more. I got my second shot, uh, a little over a week ago. Um, I felt great that day. The next day I felt a little bit under the weather. I got the shot on Monday. I was under the weather a little bit Tuesday. By Wednesday, it was, you know, no issue. So it was, I was fortunate in that respect, I guess, because I know some have had some other, uh, reactions, but you know, come the, April twenty-sixth, I'm gonna be fully vaccinated and I, I encourage everybody to, you know, if they can get the vaccine, get the vaccine and and from my, my, everything I've read and my own experiences and my family's experiences and my parents and my, and, and, and other family members, you know, the discomfort that you feel is so temporary compared to what you're gonna go through if you contract this virus. And so I, I encourage people to go out there and get the vaccines and let's put this thing to rest.
Agreed.
And I would just like to say, as someone who cannot get the vaccine, um, for several months, probably, I really appreciate those of you who are getting it. And everybody in my family's gotten it, including one son and his girlfriend who are working in Spain right now. So it's just, you know, it's a big global effort. And I'm proud of the people in our city who are stepping up and I just truly appreciate it. We do still have people gathering in the neighborhoods as the weather gets warm. Um, everybody's wanting to shrug off this cold COVID winter and enjoy the warmth when it comes and the grass is greening and the trees are blooming and the flowers are coming up finally, finally. And we all want to be outside and we want to be with people, but it's important to please mask up and avoid large gatherings. Um, and be mindful of who you're hanging out with outside of your bubble. We're, we're not over here.
Very true, Katie.
Uh, unfortunately, there's, uh, there's some that refuse to get vaccinated for whatever reason. And at some point, uh, I think everyone's gonna have to deal with those individuals.
Well, I read that, for instance, um, a certain percentage of the military are not getting vaccinated. Because right now it's, um, it's not required, but it will be required and it will be required for the schools. So I would encourage people who are worried about it or afraid or who have heard negative things to just read more widely. Talk to people who have had it, talk to their doctors. Talk to experts and see what they recommend.
One of the reasons why it's important for us to have this conversation because maybe we need to, if we hear questions and we're able to answer them, then hopefully we can continue to move forward.
Yep.
All right. Agenda item, going to Troy back with uh, potential for overnight parking on Hubbard Street. Um, Troy, do you wanna?
I really think we probably ought to move it to the fourth meeting since it wasn't advertised. They asked, so I think it'd be due justice, move it to the fourth.
All right, so push it to the May fourth meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize for that. Make sure we have it May fourth. And we had a request from Corporation Council Executive Session. Can I, and the potential for action afterwards as well. And the executive session is to discuss contract and labor negotiations. Um, Rick, am I missing anything?
A pending litigation.
Pending litigation. Litigation. All right, um, need a motion to Troy, second John, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, welcome back, council members. Your microphones might be muted. Mine was.
Yep.
I'll ask for a, a motion to adjourn from executive session. Got a motion, uh, second. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning from executive session, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're back in regular session. I have a uh, request for council, resolution to authorize the mayor to enter to a memorandum of understanding with the uh, CSEA union, labor union for the city of Cortland. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bruce Titler, discussion.
Good idea.
Okay, no further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Is there for, any further business to come before the council this evening?
Uh, yeah, and the, and the professional water operators. Authorizing you this kind of, uh, an extension.
Resolution, um, another request for council. Consideration of resolution to allow the mayor to extend the current agreement with the PWOA Professional Water Operators Association through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Motion to consider. John Bennett, Bruce Titler, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I agree. Any further business to come before the council this evening?
No.
Katie will kill us.
With that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Cat McCarthy, second John Bennett, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.
Oh.
See ya, folks.
Good night, everybody.
Tom Michael, congratulations on the retirement.
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations, Tom.
More questions from you.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.